I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
Okay, good evening, everybody. And those that are on the meeting, we apologize for the late start of the meeting. We had some technical difficulties. First order of business is the approval of the minutes regular meeting on May 27, 2020.
Motion approved.
So moved.
Is that a motion by Mr. Pollak?
Second. Second.
Who's the second?
De Silva.
Mr. Silva. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no correspondence. Norma Jean, do we have any public comments?
None.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Just that.
Do you want to make a motion to the consent agenda?
I'm all right now.
Yes. Anthony, you're fine.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Motion made to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion by Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Pollak. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Pallada. I would just like to mention to the school committee and to the public that in the consent agenda, we have recalled the large majority of teachers who were issued layoff letters earlier. We plan on reconciling our budget tonight to the number approved for our budget for the town. And with the governors and that, we need to prepare for a full return of students in the fall. And with our current enrollment, we had no choice. And we're very happy that we were able to bring back the large majority of the number of teachers who were laid off at the last meeting because they will all be needed because of enrollment as we plan for a full return per the orders of the governor. So I know the school committee is very happy to bring everybody back just about, so welcome aboard. One note that I would like to mention is that yesterday on a RISA call with the governor's office, they told us that it is going to be a while, probably not until August, until we know about our state aid. And so the governor's office told us to proceed, expecting the last state aid number that we got. It's reasonable to proceed with that number because you cannot really wait until August when Congress and the president potentially sign another stimulus and the state legislator is waiting for that to happen to decide state aid. We can't wait until the August meeting to do that. So I just want everybody to know state aid is still in flux, but we've been advised by the governor's office to proceed with the last number that we have, however, knowing there's a cut. So having said that, moving on to the superintendent's report, I'd like to first recognize the Cox Heroes of Distance Learning Award. As educators have migrated to uncharted waters with the transition to distance learning, many have emerged as heroes to our students and families who depend on them to keep their schoolwork on track. Cox Communications asked members of the community and school departments which teachers were truly excelling in this challenging environment to pay $1,000 home technology makeover for their virtual classroom. And after considering close to 100 nominations, educators from schools in many communities, but from North Providence, Marissa Bianco, a grade one teacher at Maguire Elementary School, was awarded a Heroes of Distance Learning Cox Grant of $1,000. So on behalf of the North Providence School Committee, we would like to thank and recognize Marissa Bianco for this outstanding recognition. And I know Marissa is in attendance tonight. Marissa, do you want to say anything?
Thank you. I don't know what else to say. Just very honored. And I appreciate everything that the families of my students did. It was a team effort. Bruce was fantastic throughout the whole thing. And I was very lucky. I have fantastic students. And the families are certainly heroes as well, too.
On behalf of the school committee, we thank you for your efforts. We thank you for your commitment and hard work. Is the $1,000 restricted to anything?
No. They just said that to use it toward technology. So I'm very excited to have that opportunity in the fall.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I wanted to mention something. Hello?
Go ahead, Anthony.
Yeah. I know Melissa and her family very well. She's not only a great distance learning teacher, but she's a great teacher all year round. And I wanted to congratulate her. I know she does a wonderful job for us. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Goho.
Next item on the agenda is the 2020 Rhode Island Civic Leadership Award. Secretary of State Nellie Gorbaya honored Abigail Angelone and Samantha Williams of North Providence High School last month. With the 2020 Rhode Island Civic Leadership Award, this award is given annually to recognize high school students who have made outstanding contributions to their schools and communities over the past year. The Civic Leadership Awards are part of Secretary Gorbaya's mission to engage and empower Rhode Islanders by connecting government and encouraging civic pride. Each year, high schools across Rhode Island are invited to nominate two students in the junior class who best meet the ideals of the Civic Leadership Award, public service, leadership ability, and academic achievement. This year, Secretary Gorbaya received 118 nominations from 59 schools across Rhode Island. And we're very proud of the fact that Abigail Angelone and Samantha Williams from North Providence High School were honored with this award.
If I may, Mr. Chairman? I, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marciano?
Yes. I know Samantha Williams very well. She was very instrumental helping me in 2018 in an election. I was very impressed with this young lady, and I'm not surprised at this award at all. I'm sure she's going to be very, very successful in her future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to make a comment to Samantha and Abigail. I just want to thank you for your community involvement. And I want to thank you for helping to support others in creating a better life for everyone. Thank you very much. Job well done. Congratulations. Anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Goho?
Next item on the agenda, very happy that even in this virtual environment, we're able to recognize the achievement of our student athletes. And so at this time, I would like to turn it over to Glenn Williams, our athletic director, and Gianna Nassi, our cheerleading coach, to recognize our cheerleading state champions. Glenn and Gianna?
Well, first, I'd like to thank the school committee, Superintendent Goho, and the guests. And on behalf of the athletic department, I want to thank you for honoring our athletes tonight. It was unfortunate that the pandemic interrupted our annual celebratory event that would have taken place in April. I am very pleased to see that they appeared tonight to accept their recognition as state champions. Our winter season had many highlights, but none more exciting than winning a state championship. And our winter season had a few. A girls' swim team won their division and state championship in Division III. And that was for the first time in school history. Our cheerleading team won the state championship in the lives division, their second year in a row, winning a championship. And we also had an individual wrestler win his weight class at the JV state championship. So you could see why I say it was an eventful season. So first, I would like to recognize our JV state champion wrestler, Kyle Percerno. Unfortunately, Coach Torri wasn't here tonight, but he asked me to read a few words. Kyle is a very important piece of the North Providence wrestling puddle. Two high school seasons, he has been a fixture in the practice room, working tirelessly to make his teammates better. Kyle has spent the last two seasons behind team captain Dave Catal and Allstateer Chris Matarisi. In those two past seasons, Kyle participated in the freshman state championship, placing third. And the junior varsity state championship this past season, where he was eventually champion at the 152 pound weight class. This coming season, Kyle will be a junior. And Coach Torri anticipates Kyle breaking into the varsity line and making a solid run-up, placing at the varsity state championship. Coach Torri and the rest of the North Providence wrestling coaching staff would like to sincerely congratulate Kyle on winning the 152 pound junior varsity wrestling state championship. Congratulations, Kyle. Next, I would like to congratulate Coach Nassi and her teammates, her teams, for state championship, and ask her to say a few words to introduce her athletes.
Members of the school committee and Superintendent Goho, thank you for taking the time to recognize the success of the North Providence High School cheerleading team. From our first practice back in August, these girls had one goal in mind, and that was taking home a championship. Very talented competition team, was made up of 14 girls, 11 of those girls being seniors. And they were very determined to win a back-to-back state championship. In between cheering at football and basketball games, as well as volunteering at many other school events, they put an endless amount of hours into practice and learning competition choreography. We poured our heart and soul into this season and accomplished our goal, taking home this year's large division state championship. Even though our season was cut short and we weren't able to compete at New England's, we are thrilled with all of our accomplishments this year. This team is made up of the most hard-working athletes I've coached, and I couldn't be more proud of them. I'd like to introduce you, this year's 2020 state champions. We have our sophomores, Isabella Analundi and Jordan Alabrey. We have our juniors, Haley Befry and Skytoe. We have our seniors, Nene Ducare, Captain Gianna Fallon, Adia Engenero, Shannon Holland, Anastasia Katzars, Madison Liston, Captain Alyssa Massey, Tori Payne, Lexian Arreus, and Tyne Vascensuelos. Again, I just want to congratulate them on all the hard work this season.
Thank you, Gianna, and congratulations, ladies. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge our first-ever in school history, a state championship girl swim team. Congratulations to Coach Pizzigian and her team. And I'll ask Coach Pizzigian to say a few words to introduce her athletes.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And on behalf of myself, Steve Muccino, my assistant coach, and the entire swim team, thank you Superintendent Goho and School Committee Chair Dr. Pallada, as well as all of the members of the school committee, in addition to the swimmers, their families, and the community that is on this call tonight for taking the time to honor this extraordinary group of female athletes. The Division III State Championship meet rank says the greatest night in the girls' swim team's history as we, for the first time in school history, won the girls' state title. For our seniors, it was one of the last memories made together as a group while at North Providence High School before the pandemic and quarantine began. We are so proud of the six seniors on this team and the whole team in general, and we wish all of our seniors the best. As far as some highlights from the Division III meet, this meet took place on Friday, February 22, 2020. And there is a lot to recognize. Our first event of the night, we won the gold medal for the 200 medley relay. Cassie Russo, Autumn Card, Andrea Cortez, and Marie Sinion swam a 158.96, setting a new school record. In the next event, Andrea Cortez won the gold for the 200 freestyle, swimming a 204.52, a new school record. And the 200 IM Autumn Card earned a silver medal with a 222.13, also a new school record. For the 100 butterfly, Cassie Russo earned a silver medal in a one, swimming a 103.40, which was a new school record that night. Andrea Cortez, for the 500 freestyle, earned the gold medal with a 549.19, a new school record. The 200 freestyle relay squad earned the silver medal that night. And that team was comprised of Valentina Lopez, Marie Sinion, Christine Piotakowicz, and Autumn Card with a 152.76. The 100 backstroke earned a gold medal for Cassie Russo with a 103.37, a new school record. The 100 breaststroke earned a gold medal for Autumn Card with a 113.6. And the 400 free relay team won the gold medal. And that team was comprised of Cassie Russo, Christine Piotakowicz, Valentina Lopez, Andrea Cortez, and they swam that in a 358.93, also a new school record. In total, and you heard a lot of these, the girls broke school records in seven out of the 11 events that are swam at a swim meet. And they also medaled in nine of the 11 events, earning six gold medals and three silver medals. We were down by seven points heading into the final race of the meet, and the only possible combination to win the state title was if our 400 free relay came in first. But the catch was Cranston East could not come in second place. While we won first place, Smithfield came in second, and Cranston East came in third. None of that was supposed to happen on paper, but sure enough, it finally went in our girls' favor, and we scored 360 total points that night. Only one more point than the second-place finishers, Cranston East, who earned 359 points that evening. This is why the final relay squad of Cassie Russo, Valentina Lopez, Christine Piotakowicz, and Andrea Cortez were named our team's MVPs this year. In addition, Autumn Card, Andrea Cortez, Valentina Lopez, Christine Piotakowicz, and Cassie Russo were all named to the all-division team. We're so proud of all the girls on the team, and I will now read their names as we honor each of them tonight. And I know many of them are on this call. So first, Samantha Anderson, Farrah Awad, Autumn Card, Andrea Cortez, Marina De Borba, Carla Espino, Camilla Guerra, Linda Gao, Carla Guzman, Madeline Guzman, Lydia Hopson, Meta Conti, Valentina Lopez, Captain Erin McKean, Natalia Masovitz, Maya Monroe, Emily Nassif, Alexa Pace, Gabriella Percerno, Christine Piotakowicz, Jenna Riley, Cassie Russo, and Captain Marie Sinion. So again, I just want to congratulate the Lady Cougar Swim Team. I want to thank each and everyone on this call tonight for your time. School committee and Superintendent Goho for recognizing this great accomplishment.
Thank you, Coach.
Very much.
And I want to thank you for recognizing all these athletes tonight. And I'd like to congratulate all our student athletes for their hard work and dedication to the school and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Coaches and Mr. Williams, thank you very much. That was quite impressive. Lineup of victories and achievements. And congratulations to all the teams and all the participants. And great work on your achievements. And certainly, the whole town of North Providence is very proud of you, particularly the school department. So once again, thank you, coaches, and thank you, Mr. Williams, and thank you for the members of both teams. Thank you very much. Great job. Does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, just one thing, Dr. Pallada, as a dad of a high school swimmer and a dad of a high school cheerleader, it warmed my heart to have this on the agenda tonight. Congratulations to the coaches and the players. And it's been a great learning experience for me over the last several years to realize how truly rigorous these sports are and underappreciated, and what tremendous athletes they are that participate in swim and cheer. So congratulations to the coaches and to the players.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you. Well done.
Great job.
Okay, next item on the agenda, sorry. Item D is discussion and approval of the fiscal year '21 budget resolution. It is my understanding that the town council has voted to level fund the fiscal year '21 school department budget, necessitating a budget reconciliation and requiring the school department to cut $1,292,024 from our budget. After meetings times with my administrative team and receiving feedback from building principals, I am recommending that the following reductions be made to the budget. And I would ask for a motion from the school committee to approve the budget listed in your packet in the three areas of staffing, technology, and programmatic.
So move as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. Corstine. I'll second it. Are there questions? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries.
Thank you to Dr. Pallada. Next item is the discussion of the RIDE Return to School Guidelines. By now, pretty much everyone is aware of the governor's stated goal, which is that the goal is to have a full return to school on August 31, according to a statewide calendar that has been distributed to the public. The governor said that is the goal, but she also has asked school departments to put together plans for contingencies that will be dictated by the Department of Health and guidelines for how schools should return under those various models, which I have shared with the entire committee and the entire community. So Ralph, at this time, if you could put up on the screen the slides that I gave you, I'm going to just go through the highlights of the committee and for the community. Okay, next slide. Thank you, Ralph. So the Department of Ed has asked that school departments submit three plans by July 17. Those three plans are a full in-person return to school, which would be 100% in-person operations. The next plan below that is called a partial in-person return to school. Essentially, that would mean a 50% return of students to the district at any given time. And then the next plan below that would be a limited in-person plan, which would be approximately 25% of our students back in schools with face-to-face learning. All three of these plans will be dictated by the Department of Health. They will tell the state and school departments what plan is in effect, though there might be exceptions from community to community based on the path of the virus in those communities. Looking at these three options, I can tell you, we've had several conversations amongst all of the various stakeholders. We have a very good idea of where to go with each of these three plans. The one that I must say very publicly and openly to the committee is the full in-person plan, which is the governor's goal and our goal. And we would all love to see all of our students return to school in a safe environment, following the guidelines. But I have to be very honest with everyone and say that transportation is the biggest obstacle that must be overcome. And we're working very closely with our bus company to see what we can do to be creative and also working very closely with the state. But I must say that that would be the one obstacle that at this point, unless there are some relaxations with the guidance or some creative solutions provided to districts by the state, that is going to be the one factor that might make a full return to school insurmountable. But we are working very diligently to overcome that. But I just want to be honest with people that superintendents across the state feel and are finding in conversations with their transportation companies that this is the single biggest obstacle that we have to overcome. Next slide, Ralph. And as I said, these are the three options, the full in-person, which is 100%, the partial in-person, which is approximately 50% of our students back face-to-face at a given time in a given building, or the limited in-person option, which is approximately 25% of our students back in a given building at any given time. And the state will be dictating for the entire state what plan is in effect, as I said, with some exceptions possible based on various communities. Next slide, Ralph. So some of the highlights. For elementary, primarily for elementary schools, the state is requiring elementary students to remain in stable groups of up to 30. And that includes any adults that might participate in the group. By requiring students to remain in stable groups, the hope is that the, the goal is to minimize interaction amongst students and adults as little as possible. And so that also, if there is a case of COVID in a stable group, in theory, just that stable group would have to be potentially quarantined and not the entire school. It is still expected that individuals within stable groups must maintain physical distance as much as possible. So there is no six-foot social distance requirement within the elementary schools within the stable groups. It is recommended that it be done as much as possible, but because they are in stable groups, it's not mandated, and they also recognize that it might not always be practical. The stable groups are designed to spend all or most of the day together. And when stable groups are joined, so if we have one classroom joined with another, say, in a gymnasium or a cafeteria, they may do so, but only up to the gatherings limit that is in effect for the state at that time. So currently, it is 50, which means we cannot have more than 50 kids together in a large space. In the fall, it could be higher, depending on the numbers. It could go up to 100. But no matter what that number is, those stable groups at that time must remain 14 feet apart. And one key thing for parents to know is that masks are not required at the elementary level because of the stable group stipulation. They are strongly recommended, but they are not required. So a lot of parents are concerned, you know, how am I going to have my child go back to school with it mandated that they have to wear a mask? At the elementary level, because of the stable groups, masks are not required for kids. They are, however, required for adults, knowing that there could be exceptions to that when the mask might not be practical for instruction. So at the high school, the state does recognize that the stable pod model is not doable for the most part, unless you have academies, which we do not have in North Providence. This would also apply to the middle schools. So particularly, grade seven and eight, if they are structured as a high school is structured, which in North Providence, our middle schools are structured as high schools, they would follow the high school guidelines. And so recognizing that it is more difficult to establish and maintain stable groups in the high school schedule, there are many approaches that are possible. Students are going to be required to wear masks at the high school if six feet of distance is not possible. So again, because the high school kids travel from class to class to subject to subject to earn credits from their content specialists, they cannot be maintained in a stable group. Same for the middle school. In those cases, it is recommended that six feet of distance be adhered to, although recognizing it's not always possible, especially when you consider the size of some of our buildings and our classes. In those cases, then, high school students, it is strongly recommended that they wear masks. So if stable groups are not possible, high school students must maintain six feet of physical distance, which it is not possible at North Providence High School to maintain stable groups. And it is required that they wear face masks if maintaining the maintaining of six feet distance is not possible. Groups in larger spaces, it's the same thing as at the elementary school. We can put no more than 50 kids. That's currently what the number is, though it could rise higher as you get closer to the start of school. So groups can be combined only up to the gatherings limit. And in those cases, instead of being six feet apart, they have to be 14 feet apart. So this poses a significant problem, obviously, for gym classes, which tend to be larger, and also our chorus and band classes, which are generally more than 50 students. For all grades, the use of partitions or other dividers is something that we should consider or is recommended, but it really is not something that is practical or feasible to put up petitions in schools at this point. Moving on to staff, staff are expected to physically distance from each other unless they are part of a stable group, which, again, they will be at the elementary school, but not at the high school. And staff are expected to maintain a physical distance of six feet whenever possible and should wear face masks whenever possible. As I said, there is flexibility, knowing that it is not always possible for kids and teachers to wear face masks at all times. So the guidance does provide that kind of flexibility whenever possible regarding wearing face masks. Next slide, Ralph. So for general classroom layout and use of school spaces, general spacing and movement. So stable groups, again, which will occur at the elementary school, must occupy consistent space as much as possible. This means that each group uses the same classroom every day, the same entrance every day, if possible, the same hallways, bathrooms, and other areas of the school building. When shared space is used by multiple stable groups or by high school students who are not in stable groups, disinfecting must occur in between the times when stable groups or groups of high school students use that common space. Classroom layouts. The school department must include a design for general classroom layouts at elementary following guidelines. The spacing of desks should be set as much as possible. The largest classes should be held in the largest spaces. And it is encouraged that whenever possible, that activities be held outdoors. Students are going to have to have assigned seating, and they're going to have to face the same direction. So again, for all of this guidance, the state recognizes that there will be exceptions, that there will be times when the guidance cannot be strictly adhered to. So they are very open about the fact that they say whenever possible, and that when it is not possible, then people should be wearing masks. Desks do not have to be six feet apart. So that is one thing that needs to be clear in the guidance, because people have been wondering, how are we possibly going to put desks six feet apart? In the elementary school, they do not, those are stable groups of kids. And at the high school, they do not have to be. They should be, but if they're not with it six feet apart, then people are going to have to wear masks. Next slide, Ralph. Regarding the hallways, I've been working with the high school and the middle school and the elementary schools. We need to outline a plan for hallway use which minimizes congestion. And this is an important step in the planning process. And this is an important step in the planning process. LEAs must include strategies such as staggered passing times or one-way traffic in hallways. So the high school, you know, middle schools and the elementary principals are all working together in teams to look at the layout of their buildings. We're going to be purchasing vinyl makers to put markings on the floors, as you see in stores, so that we can indicate appropriate traffic flow to minimize congested areas. Dining and cafeteria. For elementary and middle school students that have stable groups, again, primarily the elementary school will have the stable groups, lunch should take place in the same space as class activities. So that means lunch in the classroom for our elementary students. And also, outdoor dining is encouraged. For our high school students, it essentially means the same thing, however, because we can put kids in the cafeteria, but really only 50 at a time, which is what the current gatherings number is. And when we do that, they need to be 14 feet apart. So it's not practical to have kids in the cafeteria at 14 feet apart. So we will try to utilize the cafeteria as much as possible and rotate that so that kids do have the experience of having lunch in the cafeteria on a rotating basis. But primarily across the district, we're going to have to have lunch in the classroom supervised by a teacher. And we've had many conversations with Chartwells about how this is all going to flesh out. And I'm really happy with the work that Chartwells has been doing and they seem like they're in really good shape to address this issue as well. Next slide Ralph. Cleaning surfaces and school areas. Surfaces that are frequently touched throughout the day should be cleaned, sanitized, and disinfected multiple times per day for shared objects between use. Frequently touched items and frequently touched surfaces, classroom objects, desks, need to be cleaned frequently. Play equipment must be cleaned, sanitized, and disinfected when used by different groups. Hands-on class spaces, libraries, computer labs, art rooms, and other hands-on classrooms should be cleaned in between class periods. Hand washing. Schools must ensure that employees and students and visitors have access to soap and water and sanitizer containing at least 60% alcohol at all times and that frequent hand washing must be practiced throughout the day. So on this piece, I've met with Jimmy and my central office team and the administrators and we have placed an order for all the necessary cleaning supplies that we are going to need to adhere to these guidelines. And also, I have met with Jimmy and Kathy Goet to implement a plan where we are going to add an additional custodian to the first shift of every school in the district. And that person and multiple people are going to be assigned nothing but cleaning throughout the entire. So every elementary school will have an additional first shift custodian. The middle schools will as well. And at the high school, we may have to add two additional custodians. These will be substitute custodians or custodians from the second shift in those buildings who want to temporarily shift to the first shift. It won't be permanent, it won't be, it'll be temporary. So we will be using subs and temps during this time to add additional custodial help to ensure that constant cleaning occurs throughout the entire school building throughout the day. Next slide Ralph. Regarding face coverings. As I mentioned, for all in-person reopening scenarios, it is recommended, not mandated, that face coverings be used by students and staff when possible. So that's right in the first line of the guidance. You see it at the top. Face coverings are recommended when possible. Employees are required to wear face masks except with a consistent stable group. So that means elementary people who will be with a consistent stable group are not going to be required to wear face masks. High school is not going to have consistent stable groups. Then the adults are required to wear face coverings whenever possible. Face coverings are recommended, but are not required in settings where people can easily continuously maintain at least six feet of distance from other people. Cloth face covering should not be placed on children younger than age two, anyone who has trouble breathing, or anyone who is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove a mask without assistance. Older students tolerate wearing face masks for longer period of time. For high school students, face masks should be worn. Physical distancing is not feasible. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on the face mask requirement. Okay, next slide Ralph. Screening students and staff. So parents will be required to screen students at home. Let me repeat that. Schools are not going to be required to screen students at school as they enter. So there's been a lot of question about that. Are we going to have to take the temperature of every student as they enter the building? The answer is no, that is going to be a parental responsibility. Parents must screen students at home before leaving for school using a self-attestation form or an app, both of which are still in process by the Department of Ed. They can use an app on their phone or a self-attestation form that is in process. All students must stay home if they fail the screening prior to leaving for school. Families will screen students at home using that self-attestation form or a web-based application. For example, the Crush COVID Rhode Island or the self-attestation form that the Department of Ed has in place already that they may be adapting for schools. Staff. Staff are required to complete a self-attestation form or a web-based application such as the Crush COVID RI prior to arriving at school or are required to be screened before entering the school building. So this is an everyday occurrence. So students are going to have to be screened by their parents every day using the COVID app or the COVID form. And staff are going to be screened every single day either by themselves on the app or turning in the form. And if they do not do either, then the school will be responsible for screening their own staff members. Next slide. Busing and transportation. A lot of issues here, but let me just talk to you about some of the responsibilities regarding busing. So the Department of Ed currently is saying that one seat is the capacity. The only exception to that would be siblings. So that means when we had our meeting with Durham yesterday, that means that under this guidance, we can only have 22 students per bus. Now mind you, our bus capacity is 77 and we have many buses that run at or near capacity regularly. So under this guidance, this is why I have to be crystal clear, unless we have significant expansion of our bus fleet by assistance from the state or we have a significant number of families who choose not to use transportation, we cannot meet this requirement and fully transport the number of students who are eligible to ride the bus. We will not be eligible, able to have a full return to school under these guidelines. So the state has been very open that they want districts and that the state itself will be communicating to the public that they want to discourage the use of the buses by families. There are no additional buses available. We talked to Durham. They do not have any additional buses that can purchase, be purchased. There are no additional bus drivers and even bus monitors. And this is not a problem unique just to Durham. This is a nationwide problem that the state is fully aware of. So they have provided a host of options. They're suggesting things like parents' carpool. They're suggesting potentially the use of Ripta, the use of Peter Pan bus lines. I don't know how any of that would work successfully in North Providence. I have my doubts about it. They also suggested bicycles and they actually put that in the guidance. And I have to tell you, I object to that. I do not think that that is safe, especially on Middle Spring Avenue and Smith Street. I don't know what would happen in bad weather or rain. And I don't think the district wants to assume that liability. So at this point, I see lots of obstacles with a full person return when we are only allowed to put 22 kids, including the adults, on the bus. So we are hopeful that the state will raise that number as the summer proceeds. The state has told us that that is possible. If they can at least get that number to about 50, then we would be in much better shape. Even at 22, we certainly could not pull off the full in-person model. And we have our doubts as to whether or not we could even pull off the partial model as well with 22 kids on a bus. So we're going to be sending a survey out to our families who are eligible for the bus. We are going to make them aware of all of the bus regulations that I'm going to go over in a minute. And we're going to ask them to opt-in if they are definitely going to use the bus. And that they must turn in that opt-in form so that we can get some real specific data about the number of families who intend to use the bus. So that's going to be coming out in the next couple of weeks. I did want to make the school committee aware of that. Another thing that the state has suggested, and I don't know how the committee feels about this, but they've also suggested a bus lottery. So the number of students who are eligible, we conduct a lottery and we put on the bus only the number of students that can be carried on the bus according to the guidelines, which again, as I said, is currently 22. I don't know how the school committee feels about that. We can talk about all of this when I'm finished with the guidance. So just quickly, let me just say that on the bus, all students are required to wear a mask. So I need to reiterate that regarding masks. In school, as you can see, there's a lot of flexibility, but on the bus, the guidance is very clear. All students on buses are required to wear masks. Hand sanitizer must be available and used when entering and exiting the bus. So Durham is in the process of working with DOT to figure out where that's going to be stationed on the bus and it's going to be their responsibility to make sure that they're filled and used daily. Students are screened, there's a bullet here that says students are screened when getting on the bus and are seated to physically distance as much as possible. So the superintendents had no idea what that bullet meant. So we asked the deputy commissioner yesterday and she said that the bus drivers and the bus monitors are not going to be required to screen students. That we ought to assume that if a student is at the bus stop, then they have been screened and have passed the test by their parents given at home. So the parents must do this. Students must sit, as I said, one per seat unless the students are from the same household and are siblings. There will be cleaning of the buses between runs. So once we transport our high school students, which is the first run, all of the buses will be cleaned. Then the buses will proceed to pick up the middle school students and they will be dropped off and then the buses will be cleaned. And then they will proceed to pick up the elementary school students as well. And when all of the runs are done, at the end of the day, they're also going to be cleaned in between runs in the afternoon. And then when all of the runs are done at the end of the day, the bus is going to be completely disinfected again overnight for the morning. This is a very good safety precaution, but there's a significant concern here that this will significantly delay buses and we will have lots of buses not getting to school on time. And as we know, that becomes a problem for the required instructional minutes in the BEP. And to this point, the state has not relaxed any of those requirements in the BEP. So currently, our fleet is, we have 15 regular ed buses. We do not have the ability, the government can give us a trillion dollars to purchase more buses. There are no buses to purchase. And this is being said to the governor by superintendents all over the state. So you know, people just say, well, just add more buses, it's going to cost money. We don't have the additional buses, no bus company has them. So I just wanted to get that out to everybody regarding transportation. Next slide Ralph. More information regarding buses. Drivers, monitors, and other staff must be screened daily. So that's the responsibility of the bus company. Face coverings will be required for all drivers and staff. High-touch surfaces should be cleaned and disinfected between runs, as I said. And all buses should be disinfected at the end of each day. And to ensure student compliance with the health and safety guidelines for buses, additional bus monitors are strongly recommended for every bus. So in North Providence, we have bus monitors for our K-25 students and our K-25 buses. There is a shortage of bus monitors. My concern with adding additional bus monitors is that it reduces the number of kids that I can have on the bus. But hopefully, that will be relaxed. Okay, next slide Ralph. More information regarding transportation. If you look at the column to the right, possible examples to decrease the demand for buses. LEAs are encouraged to survey students about their need. So we are going to do that in the next couple of weeks with an opt-in survey, not an opt-out survey. We want parents to opt-in, eligible parents to opt-in. They suggest a bus lottery. They suggest walking school buses. They suggest bicycles to school. And they suggest subsidizing the bike cost or carpooling cost mileage to families. So I have issues with every single one of those recommendations as not being safe or practical. Next slide Ralph. Regarding the reopening plans, RIDE wants schools to prioritize face-to-face instruction for our most vulnerable populations. So whenever we decide or the state tells us that we are going to a limited model or a model that's less than full, we have to prioritize our differently abled students, our multilingual learners, our homeless or students living in temporary housing, our migrant students, our at-risk students, or our poverty students or families directly affected by COVID-19 as the families and the students that we should prioritize for face-to-face learning whenever a less-than-full model is dictated by the state. People at high risk or severe illness for COVID-19, and this is amongst students and staff, but obviously, people who are age 65 and older and anybody, regardless of age, living with hypertension, diabetes, pulmonary disease, immunosuppression, and/or other chronic long-term health conditions. LEAs must address steps that will be taken to support these medically vulnerable groups in returning to school buildings as well as continue to support working in learning from home when necessary. So we'll be working very closely with Mike Cicerone, who I know has been doing a lot of legwork with the other AFT leaders and the AFT state leaders as well to figure out exactly how we are going to do this for our most vulnerable populations, which not only includes students, but also teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, and secretaries. Next slide Ralph. Again, just to summarize the three models and the three plans that we have to submit. Full in-person learning, which is 100%. Knowing however, that there will always be some kids who will need distance learning provided to them because they may be sick, they may have symptoms, there may be a snow day, whatever it might be. The partial in-person learning is essentially 50% kids in school at one time and then the limited in-person learning is essentially 25% in school at one time. And again, the Department of Health will be deciding what plan is implemented statewide, though certain communities may be in a different plan depending on the travel of the virus within that community. So with that, that is the highlight of the guidance provided to us by RIDE. I wanted to make sure I disclosed everything and that we were as transparent as we could possibly be with the school committee and the community. And I'd like to get any direction or feedback or input that we can from the school committee and the community to help inform us as we put our plan together. And we race to do so, unfortunately, under a short time constraint by July 17th over the next two to three weeks. So with that, I'll open it up. Ralph, you can take this thing. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Goet?
Yes, I do Frank. Good job Joe, by the way. You did an excellent job going through this and compliment you on it, whatever. But I must say, it's my opinion and the opinion of many people that the students, the teachers in North Providence have done a great job with this distance learning. But I think we all agree, there's no substitute for that teacher in the classroom with the students. And also, a comment I have is, some of these things suggested by RIDE seem impossible, not likely to be done very easily at all. I know they're going to have to come back with some other ideas because as I looked at what Joe was talking about and everything, you know, cleaning the buses between runs and all this other stuff. I mean, does anyone think about schedules and people, the kids being late for the school and all these other things? Some of it makes no sense to me at all. And I think Joe did a marvelous job explaining what they're talking about. But I think, you know, I can't visualize some of these things being able to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marciano. Anyone else have any comments?
Well Joe, I want to thank you for that very detailed report. That was excellent. I have a few comments that I'd like to make if committee and the public would just bear with me. And I would just say upfront that this is just my personal opinion. It doesn't represent the committee's opinion. But first thing I want to say is I want to thank the governor and her team and also want to thank the commissioner and her team as it relates to reopening schools August 31st. I appreciate and I'm thankful for their insight in trying to find a reasonable solution that is somewhat unmanageable with multiple incomes, to say the least. Problem solving and/or creating several potential scenarios to reopen schools is a monumental to reopen schools is a monumental challenge under the uncertainty and threat of COVID-19. So what is the most reasonable approach to take? Is there a safe approach? Will all families, students, health officials, educators, and elected officials be satisfied with one scenario? Probably not. So how do we make a logical decision to best educate our students? The document Back to School RI, which Mr. GoHo just reviewed, outlines the guidelines to return to school. The document is well-written. It's basically a strategic plan. And normally, strategic plans take three years to implement and achieve the goals. Back-to-school guidelines are based on unknown conditions. We are trying to apply solutions to an unknown moving target, which is COVID-19. School districts will expend a lot of time and energy developing plans, which could easily change based on the spread of the virus. Given the guiding principles of safety first, and that's critically important, safety first, along with transparency and equity. The question for me is, how do we deliver quality education putting safety first? My personal opinion is to continue with distance learning. Though the month of December anticipating any availability of a vaccine, between August thirty-first and December thirty-first, there are seventy-one school days. With teacher orientation, professional development days, and vacation days, students have nineteen vacation days. Is it worth taking thousands of students and staff and placing them in a confined area, implementing social distancing, wearing a mask, continually sanitizing, setting up quarantine areas, trying to implement out-of-the-box scheduling, stabilizing groups of thirty, restructuring classroom space, dining, and other physical spaces, not to mention to maintain a lock? Also, as Mr. GoHo mentioned, transportation. There aren't enough drivers. There aren't enough monitors, and there aren't enough buses. What will be the additional transportation cost? Is the additional cost in our operational budget? Will we be reimbursed for any additional cost? Can we provide a quality education under the above guidelines?
No.
My mind, that's questionable. However, I fully support our great teachers and great administrators. They will do whatever it takes to provide quality education. But we cannot handicap our students and administrators by asking them to provide a quality education under the conditions of the Rhode Island Plan to reopen schools on August thirty-first. I question the reality of that. If safety is the first guiding principle, is going back to school August thirty-first safe? I say we continue with distance learning for the additional seventy-one days. Everyone did an excellent job in our district and across the state with distance learning. Would another seventy-one days be worth it? We cannot create solutions to unknown scenarios. All we can do is react to unknown scenarios. We can react to known scenarios, which we have, which was distance learning. Question is, should we continue with it? Whatever the plan is or whatever the model is, I fully understand the parents need to return to work, and students are entitled to a quality education. But we must remember that safety is first. I would hope that the governor and commissioner keep an open mind to opening school on August thirty-first. So what's the bottom line? Personally, I believe in abiding by the regulations set forth by the state. However, I would support our administrators, teachers, and parents regarding their choice of reopening schools. I have the utmost confidence in our administrators and teachers and families that the reopening model will be in the best interest of the students. Thank you for listening, and again, I want to reiterate, this is just my personal opinion. It doesn't reflect the opinion of the school committee. Thank you. Mrs. Picard?
So thank you, Dr. Palata. I just want to say, I agree that our teachers, our administrators, our families, our students definitely have stepped up during this crisis learning and distance learning. But I also think while we saw success, we also saw struggle. And I think we are not a district that's one-to-one. We had many of our families have to share Chromebooks. We had several students struggle with not having the instruction face-to-face while others were fine virtual. And I do think that we have to have an opportunity to really think about what does equity mean? All means all. So safety is absolutely our number-one priority. I think the guidance, while it provides challenges, I remember back in March, many of us said, how in the world are we going to do distance learning? And we pulled it off in a week. So I think what we need to be able to do is be flexible, make sure that we're open to thinking about the best way to handle the situation, but also be understanding and know that we're going to have to shift based on feedback. We're going to have to be thoughtful around the needs of our students, the needs of our staff, the needs of our administrators. I do think Rhode Island is up for the challenge to have these three models. Like Joe said, the timeline is not great, having a plan by July seventeenth. But I do think that we owe it to our families to provide a strong plan in all three scenarios to show that, one, we're able to do that, which I do believe we can. And, two, I worry about, even as a parent, while I think my daughter's teachers and both my daughter's teachers did an excellent job. I was home watching the challenges and, you know, my little one was finished with school very quickly. So I think, you know, while there's an opportunity for distance learning, and I think it provides flexibility around snow days, and it provided excellent parent engagement, and if anything, it provided us sometimes more channels to communicate. I also think that we have to be mindful that not opening school also has its challenges, and it will also be a concern. I think a lot of us are thinking about the learning loss that's already happened, especially for our struggling students. So I think we just have to be mindful that when we're planning, and if our parent's concerned about coming back, that we mitigate those concerns by allowing opportunities for flexibility with distance learning. While those who need to come back, we also can say we're going to do everything in our power to ensure that their safety matters, both staff and students.
Thank you, Mrs. Picard. Anyone have any other comments?
Yeah, just Dr. Palata?
Yeah.
Question for Mr. GoHo. I know you sent out a questionnaire. We're going to be sending out a questionnaire to the families, asking for their input. When is that due back?
Well, we did send out a questionnaire a couple of weeks ago that was just a regular follow-up that we did regularly for distance learning. And in that questionnaire, which we've already gotten back, we inserted a couple of questions just to get families' thoughts for the fall. And I'm going to, but we did send out an additional survey that I'm going to have Louise speak to in a second in terms of when that's due. But interestingly, the initial response that we've gotten from parents, and this seems to be following trends across the country and even across the world, a little bit over fifty percent of our families want to return to school, and around forty to forty-five percent of our families don't want to return. And that's the data that you see all around the world. So I thought that when I read that and then I saw our survey results, I thought that was very interesting. But we did send out a more comprehensive survey with specific questions about the fall. That was sent out this week. Louise, when is it due back?
Oh, sorry, on Friday. But I think we might want to give people till Monday, but I already have three hundred and seventy-two responses, so it's really good. It's really positive, and I think that's really going to help us in terms of our planning.
Let me just say one thing, too, Chuck. I think you know this. Most people know this, that nationally, any survey that you get back, if you get twelve percent back, that's really good. So while we have three hundred and seventy-two families that have responded, remember, we have thirty-five hundred kids. So we probably need about twenty-five hundred surveys to really get accurate results. And right now, any survey that you send out, if you get twelve percent back, that's doing good. But in this case, it's not good information. But, okay, but good question, Ralph. Chuck, it's due back Friday, but we'll probably give them to Monday. Any other questions? Input, thoughts?
Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Dr. Palata, just one point I would like to make. Just doing some research on the funding. So the governor has announced that she made available to school districts forty-two million dollars or fifty million dollars in new money specifically to do all of this. That's a misnomer, okay? So some families are under the impression that the entire district of North Providence received forty-two to fifty million dollars. That's not true. It's forty-two to fifty million dollars statewide. So when you think about the larger communities that we have in the state like Providence, Warwick, Cranston, East Providence, those places are going to eat up a lot of that money. So we'll be given some money. The other piece that people need to remember is that it's really not new money. Because of the budget crunch, what they did was they took the COVID money and simply replaced the state aid that we were supposed to get in the fiscal year 2020. So it is not new additional money. In fact, the eight hundred or so, some odd thousand dollars that we were to get in North Providence is less than we would have gotten with the regularly scheduled state aid, if my calculations are correct. So people just need to understand, it's not additional or new money. And when that message is get, you know, put out there, people say, why can't you do it? You got all that extra money. So I just want people to know the facts. We did get some, not forty-two million, but it really is only, it's only supplanting state aid that we were supposed to get anyway. So it's not additional money. And then looking at some communities in Massachusetts with similar demographics to North Providence, this might be a bit of a stretch, but even if we were to take half of it, communities with our demographics and our size, just for safety equipment, one point seven million dollars for the school year, one school committee, school department projected for the year. So that might be a stretch, but even if we were to take half of that and apply it to North Providence, that's still about a million dollars just in personal protective equipment and sanitization. So I just want people to understand, there is going to be a significant cost to going back to school under these conditions, which is ultimately our goal. There is nobody who wants school to return and go back to normalcy more than superintendents, believe me. So we will keep you abreast as the plans develop, but thank you, everybody, for your feedback. So moving on to the next item, which dovetails nicely with this. One thing that superintendents across the state have realized that, under any of these scenarios, we must increase the number of Chromebooks available to families. As Mrs. Picard mentioned, we almost have to go, the plans are essentially mandating districts to go one-to-one. We have Chromebooks that are out of their warranty period. They are not, some of them are old. Some of them are damaged. Some of them are not useful. So to do any of these plans, we need to make a significant investment in Chromebooks next year. So I have to give Ralph Nagian credit. He came up with a solution that's very fiscally responsible for us. I'll have Ralph talk about it, but essentially, we're looking at purchasing two thousand Chromebooks for our thirty-five hundred students. We are not going to be able to have families sharing Chromebooks. We were able to do that for a short period of time under distance learning, but under the new guidelines, it's not feasible. Kids who are homesick are going to have to have access to a Chromebook. They're not going to be able to come to school. If we shift to a partial model or a limited model, everybody is going to have to be on their Chromebook at the same time, pretty much, for the school day. So under the distance learning model that we just used, kids were able to share their Chromebooks with their family members. That's not going to be feasible under any of the new plans. So what Ralph has come up with is something that's very feasible for us financially. And it's about, it's around leasing Chromebooks. If we were to purchase the two thousand Chromebooks, it would cost us right now about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, you know, an extremely significant impact on our budget that we do not have. And there are advantages to leasing. It reduces your costs. You always have an influx of new machines. The downside is that you have a yearly recurring cost. But from my perspective, I would rather have a yearly recurring cost of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars than a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost every three to four years, which you know is not feasible, you know, with local funding. So Ralph had about a hundred thousand dollars already in his technology budget for the purchase of Chromebooks for next year. So if we lease the two thousand Chromebooks for approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, our immediate hit is to come up with an additional forty-five thousand dollars, which we think is essential. So Ralph, I'm going to ask you to chime in briefly, if there's anything that you want to add. But I personally think that the idea of leasing is a good one, and I know that the committee might have some questions about the leasing arrangement.
Best way to go.
Yeah, so this is the, through our tech admin meetings that we have every week since this pandemic started, this seems to be a lot of directions most districts are going to. It's just need to be known that it will be a recurring cost basically every year from this point forward. Because as, you know, we're going to buy two thousand now, approximately thirteen hundred of those devices that we have now go out of date. Though they will still work, the problem is, is once teachers start using applications and programs on those Chromebooks that are newer, they will not work with older version Chromebooks. So that's what usually causes the problem. However, a lot of them have the same pieces in them, so we'll take those fourteen hundred we cannot use next year, and we'll use those for parts and stuff to do repairs for Chromebooks. We're also going to have, the school committee will have to come up with approving a plan to where parents will have to be responsible. We'll have insurance policies for them to be able to take out, like most districts. Very few districts that have more than two thousand devices do insurance themselves. Any district that is over two or three thousand, a lot of times, the district makes the parents pick up the cost of that. It's very reasonable. It's like forty-five dollars a year, and that includes screen damage, which we would probably say fifty percent of our Chromebooks come back with screen damage. So it is reasonable for a parent to have, and usually, we can get it, we can get repairs done pretty cheap because we do them ourself in-house.
Ralph, if I could just add, obviously, you and Louise worked very closely on this plan, and I appreciate it. One of the reasons I had to put it on the June agenda is if we wait much longer and go into July, there's a very strong likelihood that there will be a nationwide backup, and we will not be able to get Chromebooks. Right now, there is a window of about a couple of weeks that if we order them now, then we should have them in time for school. But if we wait much longer, we may not get them until mid-year.
We are very limited in what models we can buy. Luckily, the model we currently use, the HP model, is available with just an ADM processor, which is perfectly fine. Special Ed, Cindy in Special Ed has been using ADM processors since probably last April. None of her students or anything have had any problems. They'll be fine for the students. Our biggest problem is, we are not only the only district and we're not the only state that has to do this. So they're looking at the vendor we use, which is on state bid. They, for Rhode Island alone, they have seventy-five thousand requests for Chromebook. That's how many they already have ordered, is seventy-five thousand just for Rhode Island.
Thanks, Ralph. Any questions on the committee?
Mr. GoHo?
Yes?
So actually, Ralph answered a couple of the questions that I was curious about. One thing I'm concerned about, there might be some parents that can't afford to take out the insurance policy. With that being said, as far as accountability, I mean, parents are signing for the Chromebooks. You know, I want to be assured that we do at least receive these Chromebooks back when they're done with them. You know, preferably without damage, but I just think there should be some type of policy that, you know, we have to get them back. I don't know, Ralph, with the other Chromebooks that you gave out, you and your team gave out at the beginning of the COVID, do we know approximately how many of those we've got back or will be getting back? I know some of them are going to be a little obsolete, but do we have like a return ratio or an expected return ratio on those?
The only one we, because of, with the distance learning, and they have an awful lot of summer programs now for learning during the summer at no cost. They, we agreed to allow everyone, but everyone basically to keep their Chromebooks and use them for the summer. So we got the, we got just about, and we probably only didn't get two back. So we got the, we got just about, and we probably only didn't get two back so far from the seniors. And the other ones are people who are leaving the district. Lisa Bellew at the central office and Louise are working on getting those back now. So I can't tell you, until they come back to school or begin using them in the fall, we really can't tell you what we are going to get back.
To the best of your knowledge, are there other districts that have policies on at least returning the Chromebooks?
Most of them, you cannot get your transcripts if you do not return your Chromebook. And though they might not return it if they leave the district when they're only in 10th grade per se, it might, you know, they might need it six years later, and they can't get there because of something they didn't turn back in from 10th grade.
Yeah, I don't know how I feel about that, but, you know, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, maybe we could put some kind of committee together with Ralph and his people to see maybe we can come up with some kind of policy as far as the issuing of the Chromebooks and potential return of the Chromebooks?
So we actually have a committee. I represent, I'm on that with Louise and Ralph and another great bunch of teachers.
Policy committee, right, I'm sorry, you're right.
Not policy, I'm actually, the technology. So we have both. We have a technology committee as well, so we could probably, I know Louise and Ralph, and they've been meeting weekly during the pandemic. But I also know that we've started to work on, we could probably just add pieces to that work, don't you think, Louise?
Yes, yeah. I think this is, you know, we didn't have this situation before, obviously. So now, distance learning and all of that kind of took over our lives every week and just keeping up with that. So this is another need. So, yeah, we can address that through that team as well.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Palau?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. I have a question.
Mr. Andriozzi.
Sure. Thank you. Ralph, so the policy is, you're saying it's $45 per person, per Chromebook. That's, I mean, 45 times 2,000 is $90,000. So my question is, what does that cover if a parent takes that policy out? Does it cover, it just covers damage, it doesn't cover loss, does it cover, you know, if they leave? I mean, if there's a better policy, that might be $70 per book that covers us in case they leave and don't come back. Now we can get reimbursed for the whole Chromebook, or there isn't one. Like, I'm kind of confused as to what the policy actually covers. You know, when you break it down by 2,000, sure, it sounds small, $45 a person, but it's still $90,000 policy on 2,000 pieces of metal. You know, it's a lot of money.
Mr. Andriozzi, the, there are different plans, as well as there's different companies. The Worth Group is who we seek the information, the initial information out on. And they were, they were, they've been a company that have been around a long time, and I believe the PTEC program students use that because they're the only ones who take home Chromebooks now for the PTEC program. And they get that insurance policy. But the trust, which is the school district's insurance company, they went to all the districts, and they've come up with a, they kind of did a little negotiating with the Worth Group to try to bring that price down. So it does, they did say it does cover accidental and screen breakage, which is kind of one of the big important ones. But we could certainly, before we make any decision, make sure we go through all of them and exactly, like lost, that's probably one that costs a little more money, like if it's completely missing, because it's probably a little harder to prove. So something like that might cost us more. So we could certainly do that, sir.
It's just a question. I mean, like I said, if there's a policy out there and it's a matter of five or six or $10 more, and we're gonna, I hate to say this, but, you know, relay it toward the parent, you know, instead of 45, it's 55, but if it gets lost or stolen, at least we get reimbursed. It's just a question that I had. Thank you very much, Ralph, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, so the recommendation is to lease the Chromebooks for three years.
Don't move.
I have a question.
Okay, it's a motion by Mr. Marciano, second by Mrs. Picard. Question? Who had a question?
Sir, I have a question. I'm right up here, one second. My question is, is if we have 3,500 students, here we are, and we only get 2,000 Chromebooks, what is going to be the net coming back? We're still short, from your math, 1,500 Chromebooks.
We currently have over 3,000.
Okay.
So the 2,000 additional is going to replace what needs to get replaced by end of life and be able to succumb to the rest of the kids, to be able to get them.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
You all set, sir?
All set, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Chromebooks will be leased for three years. Thank you. Next item. Superior Superior's report. Tzatzenga.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the school committee members. You have the update hopefully in your, in front of you. But just to recap, we've completed our school year and our journey through virtual and distance learning, as you know. Throughout that time, we had five professional learning days with schools collaborating on teams for planning, learning new technology platforms and activities for lessons, student engagement, and also continuing to learn best instructional strategies from each other. Within that time, as Mr. Goh said, we, I sent several surveys, and we just sent out, sent out two other surveys following up for parents and teachers. And from that first survey, we did have some questions about coming back, including what model people would prefer, but again, indicating that Ride's intent was to have 100% return. So after that, we also sent out this other informational survey for parents, of which, like I said, it was due tomorrow, but we can extend it to Monday. And so far, we have 372 responses, of which I know that's not quite enough, but it'll give us some information in terms of trends and what people are thinking as far as our return. And then, as Mr. Goh said, we'll send out a specific transportation survey, which will really give us great information if parents are able to transport and so forth. And there's some quick data there for you in front of you as far as a snapshot from March of 2020 till now, till we ended the school year. Just to show you the information as far as Google Classroom and the post in Google Classroom and Google Meetings, you can see that there's quite a variety and there's a high capacity of meetings and things that took place. So we're really proud of our teachers and our principals and everyone for supporting that effort. Our average daily attendance was 95%. For breakfast and lunch and meal deliveries, we served over 15,000 meals, breakfasts, in addition to over 4,500 snacks that were included in that effort. So thank you to our food service and to all of our entire school community for working together on that. As Mr. Goh presented, we have to work on our district reentry plan, which we are working on. We now have a calendar from the state, which we integrated into our own calendar. And so we're really happy to say that through that calendar, we'll have eight professional learning days as part of that calendar, and we'll be working on that. Wanted to just update you on diversity talks, which was happening at the high school due to a grant that we received of $30,000. And so actually, students went through training this past week. So students will be trained as student facilitators, and this is to support work and equity and cultural responsiveness and working on those practices around equity at the high school. And also, so far, we have 12 teacher facilitators that have, that will be trained later in August. And so those groups will come together, they'll create an action plan, and they will come back to the high school, and they will work with the entire faculty to work on those concerns. So we're really excited about that. For the third year in a row, we've sent out our summer reading and math learning for grades K to 12. So that went out, it's being posted on the website now. And then, of course, we had a lot of our end of year celebrations. Even though it was a unique end of school year, as we all know, every school celebrated milestones and completion of kindergarten, grade five, grade eight, and of course, our high school seniors. So everyone was celebrated for their diligence and perseverance all year. And I want to thank our principals and teachers for making those events so memorable and really special. And that's it. And you also have an update, which I did share with the whole district. My assistants have printed an update, and which really focused on distance learning and all the highlights from the last few months. And I just wanted to just piggyback some of the survey information, because I got the information after this information went out to you, the update information. It was very similar as far as the teachers, but they highlighted a lot of interesting things that they learned throughout these past months. So that'll help us to guide our professional learning experience for our teachers. But the parent piece was pretty similar as far as their feedback, and then highlighted some issues and concerns that they had in terms of distance learning. And clearly, most of the parents want our students to return back 100%, which we already kind of stated earlier. So we're going to keep working on our reentry plans and those three options and, you know, move forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have.
Mrs. Picard?
So Louise, just on the school calendar, I know Ride provided some clarification around the religious holidays. Do we know, maybe you are, Joe, do we know if we're going to keep those in the calendar? Or are we, like, what's our plan?
We took out Yom Kippur and the other holiday later in May.
Okay, so we're moving those too. So that means our last day of school will actually be two days earlier.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be, yeah, those were optional per ride. We asked, we clarified that.
Okay.
Yeah. The state gave us the option, they gave districts the option that if you normally don't recognize those holidays, you don't have to. So we removed them from our calendar. So our graduate, our last day of school will be June 16th, as opposed to June 18th, if we had those two days in. And then our teacher.
I wanted to clarify, Joe, just to make sure our parents know, because now there's these two running calendars.
Oh, I know, I know. The state updated the calendar and didn't tell anybody.
So as much as we can read it.
We did just send that out, but we can clarify.
I mean, maybe even putting it on the website, Louise, like way upfront and sent Ralph, so we make sure that it just says, you know, while this says it was an option for districts.
And then we can add, and we will be adding our three professional development days to the calendar. As we normally do, we'll have teacher orientation day on the Wednesday before the week of the 31st. The professional development day will be the Thursday, and then people have Friday, Saturday, Sunday off, return to school on Monday, the 31st. And then the third professional development day, we have traditionally broken that up into six one-hour meetings during the school year, and we'll continue that practice.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Louise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, any school committee reports? We have none, we have no old business. Moving on to new business, the first item on the new business is discussion and approval payment to the student transportation company for the balance of the school year. I believe we discussed this issue at last month's meeting. We had made a recommendation under the discussion of to retain the $750,000 and not to pay Durham for services beyond March 13th to the 23rd. The first option that was presented to us will also make us somewhat eligible for the CARES reimbursement. We had talked about that at the last meeting. We did not take a vote on it. In fact, on the calendar, I believe we need to give the district some direction on this. You have the four options in front of you. The only question I have before we proceed to the second item, which is the contract for Durham. And I would ask this question of our attorney, Mr. Scungio. These are two separate issues, Mr. Scungio.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we're still recommending at this point that we kick that first issue over until the next meeting. We hope to have some negotiations concluded with Durham at that point in time. We've been, Durham sees the issues as separate. We saw the issues as connected. However, Lori Miller in my office negotiated what we believe are excellent contract terms for next year and future years. Bus transportation at a very, it's a rate that most school districts would die for. So I think that we should move ahead and vote on that contract. And next meeting, we should be back with a report as to whether or not it was possible to negotiate any settlement with Durham that the committee could then consider.
So chronologically, you prefer that we vote on the contract first?
Yes, I think it's very important to lock in our transportation over the next three years.
What is the rate?
The rate is going to be COLA. The COLA has been averaging about 1.5 to 1.75% per year. Most districts are experiencing an initial rate of anywhere between 12 and 19% in the first year, and around 3% for years two and three. So you could see that the rate that you have under this contract is outstanding. Providence was lucky enough that the superintendent and Ms. Cassinelli sent this matter out to bid early enough in the year, so it wasn't affected by COVID-19. So you're the beneficiary of that very prompt action in terms of getting that bid out there. So we're in a really good position, I think, with this contract.
Is there anything else you'd like to highlight regarding the contract?
I submitted a memo to the committee that I believe your secretary sent to you. Yes.
Yeah.
We didn't receive this contract until today. We were negotiating the terms right up until today. We received the signed copy by Durham today, by email. All the issues that the school committee had had told us to pay attention to, we had, and we have contract language around those issues to protect the district. One issue I think the school districts have been grappling with is what happens next year or the year after in terms of distance learning. So the negotiated language in this provides that it's a 180-day contract, which means you have 180-day rate. And if there are six, 10, eight, or more distance learning days, those will be paid at half the rate. So the district will save 50% of the daily rate for every day that you're not in session as a result of distance learning, which we think is an excellent compromise, especially considering the percent increases that we're going to experience over a three-year period.
Question, Ben?
Mr. Marciano.
Yeah. Will this contract be affected at all by some of the requirements that the Ride is talking about as far as the buses are concerned, men or no effect?
Well, the only effect that it'll have is if Ride increases the distance learning days. So that will reduce your daily rate by 50% for each one of those days. And it will ensure that the bus company has the capacity to provide you transportation services whenever you need them, which is, I think, the key in this agreement. You're not going to be in a situation where the bus company is going to be unsettled or not able to provide you with the services that you need based on the contract language.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Andriozzi.
So hypothetically, if the whole, if the 2021 school year gets scrubbed, we're on the hook for 50% of 180-day contract, correct?
Yes.
So there's no getting out of that one?
No. Nope.
So if we lose the entire year next year, we have to pay them, period?
Right, so when you look at the contract, you've got to look at it from both perspectives. What bus companies do is that they resell or they finance their buses. They also hire their employees. If they don't have some level of comfort that they're going to be able to manage that in case we have a distance learning year for all of next year, you're not going to have them at your beck and call to provide transportation when you need to. So it's a trade-off. And the trade-off was 50% in this case, which should adequately cover their expenses and their employee salaries for the cost of the year. What we get is, we get the certainty of transportation whenever the superintendent turns it on or off.
Okay, Ben, can I just add to that, to Mr. Andriozzi's question?
Yes.
Our current contract has the same li- Our current contract has the same, has very similar language that in the event of an emergency, we have to pay Durham a certain percentage for the first nine days that there is no school in effect. And then after that, for every other day, it could be the next 172 days, we have to pay them a negotiated rate. However, the, the Federal CARES Act is giving us some latitude to possibly not adhere to that for this past distance learning period. Next year, if there is no Federal CARES Act, but there is still distance learning in effect, we have to abide by the contract language. There will be no CARES Act that'll give us any wiggle room. Does that make sense?
Oh, it absolutely makes sense, and I'm concerned that we're, what's next year's rate? What's the total for next year? What's next year's rate going to cost us? If, if there is 180 days of school and they, and they transport our children back and forth to school, what does it cost for that contract for one year?
All I can tell you is I believe you save about $700,000 for March 13th through the end of the year. If you don't.
I'm asking what, I'm asking what next year's contract is going to cost us.
I hear you. I think you have to ask Lisa for that figure.
Okay. So how many, how many millions is?
I'm not sure I have that with me, but I can, I'm going to look right now. Hold on.
I'm sure it's multi-millions.
It's a significant amount of money.
Oh, there's no doubt. So if there is no school, we're on the hook for 50% of multi-millions.
Well, yeah, but it's already, A, it's built into your budget. And B, the alternative, the alternative is if you don't work out some kind of compromise, you won't have any bussing at all, and then you'd have to deal with that issue going forward. So what do you do if you don't have a bus company? So the reality in Rhode Island right now is that, and we're dealing with this in five other school districts right now, is you only have one bus company that's responding to a bid for whatever reason. And the increases that they're asking for is very significant. So you have to, you have to weigh that in, in, in this kind of transaction, not just the fact that if we have distance learning, we don't need the bus service, so we should be paying them zero. That's not going to be acceptable to any of the bus companies because they can't financially operate on that basis. So that's the issue.
So without this language, basically, we wouldn't have potentially any bus service for our students. That, that's just reassuring them. It gives them some comfortability.
Exactly. They, we all know what's going to happen if a certain event happens. That gives them the ability to plan, just like it gives us the ability to plan.
Right.
So if the same thing happened next year at the same time of year, you know, you'd be, budget-wise, you'd be about $325,000, $330,000 to the good in your budget. So which would be about half of the $700,000 that you, $700,000 that you're saving right now.
And what you're required to transport by law.
You have to transport by law right now, yeah.
I, I understand all of that. I'm just concerned that if the whole year gets scrubbed.
Yeah, it's a possibility.
It's a possibility. It's highly likely that it could happen. We're, we're on the hook for the entire, well, 50% of the amount. That's, that's what I'm concerned about.
I mean, our other alternative is to negotiate a contract where we skip next year. So if you do that, if you do that, how do you handle transportation for next year in the event you do go to school? Given the governor's stated priority that she wants students in school, I don't know how you manage both of those competing issues.
I, I don't understand how we're going to manage it anyway, Ben, not, not to get into a debate with you, but she's asking for, you know, 22 children on a bus that holds 77, and there's no buses to be found if, like Joe said, if we had a trillion dollars in our back pocket, we couldn't, we couldn't buy a bus. So her, her plan isn't going to work regardless anyway. So I'm kind of confused as to what we're doing. You know, I, I'm breaking it down to us. So in spite of what her plan is, and we do not go back to school, we're on the hook for 50% of how many million? That's all I want to know. I'm, you know, I asked the question.
I have, I actually have the amount if you, I just looked it up. So next year, it's, it's for 2.4 million is what we had for per their bid. So we would be on the half, we'd be on the hook for half, so.
1.2 million dollars.
Right, yep.
If there is no school, we pay 1.2 million. Currently, we're in a deficit of how many, how much money? $1 million? I'm just, I'm just concerned as to, like, I get the fact that we need the buses. I understand that. I'm just wondering if that's language in a contract that we need to have. If, if they won't sign the contract without it, I guess we have no choice. But I'm concerned that it's in the contract. That's all.
It's budgeted for 2.4 million.
I got it. I understand that.
So you're going to save half that.
You're saving half of it, but you're already minus the original coming in.
What you're concerned about is not, not getting the service, right? Not paying for the service.
You're paying, you're paying 1.2 million for something you didn't get, number one. Number two, we're already in the hole 1. some odd million. So you're really not saving anything, you know. I, no problem. We'll, we'll just, if that's, if that's, if that's the way we're going to go, we'll, if, if Ben thinks it's the best idea to, to, to sign this contract and he feels confident, I guess I'm on board with it.
Well, if I, if I can just add, like I said, the current contract that we have and contracts in other districts, we're not unique with language like this, with this new contract. Most, if not all, transportation contracts have language about emergency situations and what the rate will be for a period of time. Our current contract has that. I think Mr. Androsi is correct that if the entire year is lost, we're still expending $1.2 million for a service they're not receiving, which is a concern. I think on the flip side, the benefit to us is if the more likely scenario kicks in, which is that we're, we are in school face-to-face for at least a portion of the school year, which I think is very likely. And I think a portion of our kids will be in school face-to-face. I think that's very likely. We're going to need those buses, obviously. What I think is more likely than losing the entire year is a period where there is distance learning like we just had. So if the experts are correct and that there is a flare-up of the virus during the flu season, we could have an interruption to the school year that goes, you know, December, January, and February. If you see what the colleges are doing with their schedule, that seems to be what they're planning for. So the benefit to us of this language is that if we have that breakdown of two to three months, and let me say, nobody knows what's going to happen. Nobody even knows if that's going to happen. They're saying it's possible we could have a flare-up, but it's also possible the virus could really dissipate. But worst-case scenario is that there is a flare-up, we have a pause during the school year of distance learning, we resume face-to-face learning for a portion of the school district or all of the school district, say, back in February or March or April. We will need the bus company to be intact, but we will not be able to transport our kids. So that's the benefit of having this language. So it is a double-edged sword, to your point.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Joe. Thank you. Thank you.
All set, Steve?
Yes, I am, Doc. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? So the recommendation for item A on the new business regarding the current fiscal year is to table that until the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Move the table.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to table by Mr. Marciano. Stay, second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B is a recommendation to vote on the contract that you have before you. Are there any additional questions or concerns regarding that? Okay, hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Marciano.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Androsi. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. I just have an accounting question. Lisa?
Yeah, yeah.
Just an accounting question. For the current fiscal year with the, with the holding up of the payment, if we move on that or vote on that in the next fiscal year, and there's a savings within that, how does that get recorded?
Technically, it was incurred in this budget year, so really, it should be recorded as a payable for fiscal year 20, even though we're paying it in July. It's really an expense from fiscal year 20, so we really need to put it at the order, even if we tried to book it in fiscal year 21, he's going to move it back to 20 because that's really where it belongs.
It'll stay in FY '20.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Yep.
Next item is use of property. Chair will entertain a motion for use of property.
Don't move.
Don't move. Motion by Mr. Marciano.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Picard. Are there questions on use of property? No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Next item, 12, approval of bills. You should have gotten two additional invoices from Norma Jean that you should have before you. Item would be approval of bills.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll take the motion then.
We need a motion.
The motion by Mrs. Picard.
Aye, motion made.
Seconded by Mr. De Silva. Okay, any questions, Mr. Androsi?
I have a question on the, on the new bills that came today.
Okay.
It would be number 78.
Hold on, I have to actually look it up.
Tuition reimbursement for someone?
Let me see. I'm sorry, I don't have the, the new list right in front of me. I had to, I'm going to pull it up right now.
Yeah, some kind of tuition for someone?
I would assume it's for a teacher, possibly.
Very large.
Let me see.
Is it for a child to be in school?
Tuition reimbursement.
43 million, can I be right?
No.
No, no, no. It's $8,700.
Oh, I was going to say, wow.
That was on the new, the new list?
The new list.
That came today?
Yep, number 78.
Why don't I?
90169 in line B.
Oh, it's towards, towards the bottom. About 10, approximately 10 up from the bottom.
I apologize. I'm trying to read it on my phone because I don't have my other laptop set up.
That's okay.
Oh, it's the Sherlock contract, I think. I think it looks at the Sherlock Center.
Oh, the Sherlock Center is a special ed expense. That's a tuition.
Okay. Well, it, it said Paul V. Sherlock. I didn't know what's going on.
Yeah.
I thought it was the first move.
Nope. It's easy to confuse that. No, it is a name, so.
Sorry about that. I thought we were paying someone's tuition. Thank you.
No, that's a lot of money for a tuition reimbursement. I was like, whoa.
Thank you.
Glad we got that. No problem.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
This is Paul.
Hearing no other questions, the chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by.
I'll second.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Norma Jean, do we have any requests to address the committee?
She's on mute. You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Sorry, yep. No, no, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. We have no pending business. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Seconded by Mr. Androsi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, the motion carries. Thank you.
Yes.
And thank you for the good emotional meeting.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
God bless.
Bye-bye.